I will open the Blackstone Millville Regional School District School Committee meeting for November 14th if we could all stand for the pledge and remain standing for our moment. My pledge will be to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, collectivity, justice, and moral. Thank you. And sadly, we do have three past employees that have recently passed away, so we're going to have a moment of silence for all of them. Martha Allen, she was a teacher at the AFM school from 1970 until 1995. Aileen Green, she was a cafeteria worker at BMR. And Mike Cronin was a high school teacher at BMR. Thank you. Please, would you do introduction of members, please?
Carrie Vernon Melville.
Jack Keith Blackstone.
Aaron Binaco Melville.
Tara Larkin Melville.
Sarah Williams Blackstone.
Jacob Chaplin student of AP.
Matt Earnorth Assistant Superintendent.
Jason DeFalco Superintendent.
Thank you. And actually, before we get to any other business on our agenda, it looks like the first thing on our agenda is the recognition of our BMR marching band. Thank you. So clearly, they need no introduction, but I will state for the record that they are national champions as of last Saturday. They went down to MetLife Stadium and performed, and a lot of us were lucky enough to be there. Dr. DeFalco was there, and we are witnesses to your performance and leaving your hearts on that field on Saturday. So we are very proud of you, and it deserves more recognition than we could ever give you. But I just want to point out the hours that these kids put in. I know all the parents are here too, so they definitely know the commitment and the happiness, the days of tears. I know all of our kids have ups and downs with it, so well deserved, and I hope you can ride this feeling for the rest of this year, because this is a full year of national champions. If I could have Mr. Schaper and Mr. Markov come to the table to us, please? And if there's anyone else you'd like, like your drum major or...
No, students are watching this floor.
So if you wanted to share anything about your season, tell us something you showed during, what your record is, we'd love to hear it.
Oh, okay. So we had an undefeated season this year, which I think we're all very proud of. And other than that, I think we put in a lot of hard work, and I'm personally very proud of this entire band and our program, and I'm lucky to have been a part of it for five years.
Well, I'm not a senior yet, so I'm looking forward to coming back next year and hopefully winning again.
I am a senior, so I'm really happy that this is how we got to the end, and I don't think we could have done any better. That was, he's given the best shows I've ever been part of, so I'm super, super proud of this team. I'm still happy to have been part of it.
Great. Mr. Schaper, is there anything you wanted to add?
I just want to recognize the staff. We have a former alumni who's on our staff now, Austin Neskoye, who's here today. And obviously, Mr. Markov, who's also an alumni. What these kids accomplish is in large part due to their hard work and in large part due to the amazing staff that we have. We're very fortunate that more than half our staff is actually alumni, but that we have so many people that are willing to come out to Blackstone Millville and work with these kids, and they love them too.
Great. Mr. Markov, if you want to add something? So with that, we have a presentation for you all and for the staff. Just, it's a certificate of excellence. It's something that we want to share with you and your entire band, and I believe some plaques will be coming along with it.
Yes, it's kind of a placeholder until the plaques come in, and so...
That's right.
And this is for the marching band members. If you can display that in the band room.
When the plaques come in, we'll bring them to you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
And if I could just add one, there's your company. So I have the privilege of hearing the students in like mid-August starting to tune up their instruments and seeing the flags kind of whipping by my window, I look over in the courtyard, and just watching the students grow and listening to the... You literally can hear the change in their music over that period of time. It is so remarkable. And, you know, leaving at the end of the day, and it's just interesting, right? It was kind of an interesting fall with the weather and the whole mosquito thing, and, you know, these kids are out there with the whole mosquito issue they're dealing with. It rained. I went out one day, and it was, I mean, I could barely see, it was so foggy. They're out there rehearsing. My car was in the middle of their rehearsal. And I remember times that I'd call in, I'm like, "Oh, my God, I love you guys, I'm so sorry, did it again." They're like, "Come on." So remarkable in terms of dedication, talent, teamwork. And I just think the precision of that performance Saturday was unbelievable. You guys were unreal. You executed, and I don't even know all the technical side of this, but like it looked like everything was perfect, absolutely perfect, from every single one of you, every instrument, all the kind of theatrical part of it, and you just told the story beautifully. It was just an incredibly proud moment for me as a superintendent. So thank you so much, and thank you to the staff and the parents. I see a lot of you in your lawn chairs reading while the kids are performing and sitting in the cars, and I'm sure, you know, many of you have heard on work calls as you're trying to squeeze things in and support the kids in doing this, because it's so much time, effort, and energy, and we're just really, really grateful for all of you. So thank you so much.
Would anyone like to add something?
Congratulations, well done.
Would anyone like to move into the next section of our agenda?
So I would like to make a motion to approve BMR's marching band jackets for, I think, the new students, anyone who doesn't already have one, and patches for those who already do.
Okay, so motion made by Tara, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jack. So if you're not aware, but I think most of you might be, if you do win a championship, the school committee does purchase these beautiful jackets that you do see throughout the room for any member that has not had one previously. All the members that do have them will receive a new patch with the new year and the national championship logo on it. And Mr. Schaper will get those, that order to us, so we can get that in right away.
Will do.
Is there any other conversation on the motion? Okay, all of us in favor of the purchase of the BMR marching band jackets and patches? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you very much. I don't know if they'll be in by Christmas, but shortly.
Thank you guys very much for that.
Thank you very much. The national champions. And just one more thing, I, we cannot let the parent volunteers or the pit crew go without being recognized. They build from scratch all the props on the field, they put them together and take them apart every single time they're using them. The truck driver, every Saturday, it's 10 and 12-hour days, so there are so many people, countless people that need to be recognized for their time and energy. And I just also want to point out that you will be marching in the National Memorial Day Parade as national champions. So I hope everyone is loud and proud on that day, because we will also be there watching. And thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
We will move on to our report of the student representative. I heard the other one is stuck.
Flatt, hi.
It's all you.
So an update on athletics is cross country ended the season 1-3, field hockey 2-15, football, I think, is still going, they're 4-4, boys soccer is 4-11, girls soccer is 6-11-1, and volleyball is 7-11. And then update on student council activities, we scheduled our mock leadership conference for the middle school, which is December 3rd. Our goal with this project is to have the middle schoolers in the student council area be exposed to leadership training at the high school level and to demonstrate what leadership is at high school level. So we're really looking forward to that, it's a major project for us this year. And then we also started the planning of our pep rally, which is really our biggest event, and the entire student body loves that event. We also, in December, have our Choice for Tots going on, which is signed and used on every year. And then last week, we also had 24 delegates attend the CDMASC leadership training conference, and four of those delegates presented leadership training workshops at that conference. And then for NHS, the Empty Bowl fundraiser, which takes place in February, and 100% of those proceeds goes to the food pantry, we began planning that this past week, and we also have a cemetery parade at our school tomorrow scheduled.
Any questions for Jacob? Did you attend the conference?
Yes.
How was it?
Very fun.
What did you take out of it?
So for me, I was one of the people that presented a workshop, so my main thing there was, we were presenting a workshop about communication, different ways of communicating, and we really learned a lot about how different councils communicate their ideas, so I think we're actually going to do a lot with our council and reach out to other councils more as a resource.
All right, thank you very much for giving me all the questions. And I believe next on our agenda, we have Mr. Dudik for...
Yes, and actually, I'm going to tee it up for Mr. Dudik, and we're going to recognize this evening two, two of our high school students. In June, Elizabeth Correa and Sophia Gerton represented Blackstone Millville Regional High School and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts at the Congress of Future Medical Leaders in Boston. Elizabeth and Sophia were surrounded by many fellow high school students who share the same passion, ability, and potential in the medical field. Their successful completion of the congress included observations of a live surgery, as well as being mentored by prominent medical school academic leaders. The academy's primary founding principle is to recognize and reward high achieving students dedicated to medicine or the STEM, which is science, technology, engineering, and math subjects. Both Elizabeth and Sophia were nominated through the College Board Student Search Service. Mr. Dudik.
Thank you for having me here today. I do want to extend congratulations to our marching band as well, and I believe both of these two young ladies are marching bands, right? So this is an equal celebration today for everything that's been happening. We've had just a year of celebration, and I can't be more honored to be your principal to have national champions in our small town of Blackstone and Millville. I unfortunately could not get to town, to New York, New Jersey, but I saw all the tweets and videos, and it was just a great, great experience for you guys. So live it up, and I know, you know, oftentimes we hear high school and the memories that you have that you'll hold on to for the rest of your life. I think you have a very extra special memory to be able to have when you're old and gray, like all of us, and hopefully have your kids get into marching band as well. So congratulations to the middle school and high school students for that honor. So today, I wanted to just briefly recognize two of our young ladies. Over the, so it wasn't summer, it was early September, I had the honor of receiving a big sort of envelope packet in the mail, I was curious about what that was about, and I usually don't get these certificates in the mail, but what I received was a letter that highlighted two of our BMR students for their academic and leadership achievements. So Ms. Elizabeth Correa, Ms. Sophia Gerton, I would describe them as self-driven, motivated, curious learners, they're dedicated, they're passionate, and in the day of having marching band here, I'll say that they are true rock stars. So I just want to recognize them for something that they did outside of school. Oftentimes, we talk about the in-school components and extracurriculars, but this is something that they did over the summer, and we're honored to be a part of the Congress of Future Medical Leaders in Boston, Mass. So I believe it was a three-day workshop that they were able to experience with a bunch of other student leaders across Massachusetts, and I just wanted to highlight a few of the things that they were able to do in those three days, which to me, simply amazing. I wish I had this opportunity when I was, when I was a high school student. Both Liz and Sophia were able to watch a live surgery and had a chance to question the surgeon in real time. They were personally taught by some of the greatest living minds in medicine, so winners of the world's most prestigious international prizes such as Sir Richard Roberts, who was a Nobel Prize winner recipient in physiology and medicine, Rakhish Jan, who is the director of the Steel Lab for Tumor Biology at Mass General Hospital and recipient of the 2013 National Medal of Science. They also were mentored by some medical school academic leaders from Dartmouth University and Georgetown, and they were also inspired, hopefully, by some young quote geniuses who are leading the future of medicine. One was Jack Adraka, who was a 2012 Intel Science and Engineering Fair grand prize winner, breakthrough innovator, and 2015 Google Science Fair grand prize winner, Olivia Halazay. So with that in mind, if I could have those two young ladies come up, and I'd like to read the Congress of Future Medical Leaders Board of Excellence. I'll just read one, they're both the same, but again, I think this forum is just an awesome opportunity to be able to recognize some of our leaders in the building. We truly have talented students in all fields of leadership, to art, to athletics, to various extracurriculars, to art, and this to me is just a great honor to be able to recognize the two of you for everything that you do. So this is, "The Medical Advisory Board of the National Academy of Future Physicians and Medical Scientists confers honor and distinction upon Ms. Elizabeth Correa and Ms. Sophia Gerton for outstanding academic performance, leadership potential, and dedication to serving humanity through the profession of medicine." This is through the Congress of Future Medical Leaders in 2019. This, I don't know if was presented to you in the summer, but I'm presenting it now, but they have the 25th day of June 2019 in Boston, Mass. With this recognition comes all the rights, honors, and privileges there unto pertaining to the National Academy of Future Physicians and Medical Scientists. So hopefully, we are seeing two medical geniuses in front of us. And we're not calling you doctors yet, but hopefully that comes after like 15 years of education. You'll get there at some point. So Liz, here you go, congratulations, and Sophia, congratulations. Thank you for... I also am ordering you some white jackets, so you'll get those. Probably before Christmas, so we'll get that there. Sorry, I don't think I can do it.
Thank you very much. All right, and if there's no rejection from the committee, we're going to continue on to consent to agenda A, and we will have our public forum after our parts. So I'm looking for, issuing for consent to agenda A, we have words, minutes of the meeting for October 10th and 24th.
Yes.
And there are two good remarks. Any questions? So I'm just looking for a motion for consent to agenda A.
Yes.
By Jack, is there a second?
Second.
Any confirmation? All those in favor of consent to agenda A?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any unanimous? And we will move to the report of the superintendent.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, just wanted to give everyone a minute to get situated. The first item under my report is some more exciting things to celebrate. We have two new faces here this evening and one familiar face. We just wanted to take a moment to introduce three of our newest team members. One of those members is not new to the district, but new to her position, and we are absolutely thrilled to have all three of them here. But first, I'd like to reintroduce to the committee in her new role, Ms. Mary Vaughn, who is taking over as our elementary planning, teaching, and learning coach. We could not be more excited to have you, Ms. Vaughn, in this new position and working with us through the transition. As I know, it's so important to you to stay relentlessly dedicated to those beautiful, brilliant fifth graders that you teach every day, so, but we are so excited to have you join the team in this capacity.
Thank you.
Next, I would like to introduce Ms. Jenica Racine, who is our new coach for our special education department. And like Mary and like Jeff Curran, she is working very hard to align the work across and throughout our special ed department, but I'm going to actually ask Ms. PG to say a few words.
And I'll have Jenica come up with me.
That'd be great.
So just very briefly, because this is new, when we changed our model, but it's been an absolute pleasure having Jenica come on board for our planning, teaching, and learning coach for our special ed. She's a great addition to our new model. We've had a chance to review the presentation that I was able to make in September, so she knows where we've been, she knows where we are, and she knows where we're headed. So she's very aware of our focus and direction. I've received a lot of positive feedback from staff that she is here with us, and also, she's accomplished so much in the short time she's been here. So if you just want to let them know a few things, any kind of address so far for us?
So far, I've been here a couple weeks, but so far, I've been able to meet the special education teachers across the district, I've made it a priority to go into the classrooms, to meet all the teachers, attend the PLCs, connect with the other coaches, and really develop my sense of the schools, and learn more about the special education program in classrooms.
So again, I just wanted to just say thank you to the school committee for supporting us bringing on, it wasn't initially what our plan was, but bringing Jenica on, I think it's a great addition, and I'm very much looking forward for her helping us move forward, because we have a direction, we have a focus, and I'm definitely happy to have her on board to help us with that.
If I could just add one thing too, having the three planning, teaching, and learning coaches part of the district leadership team, I think is just tremendous. Getting the insight and their feedback, I know Mary had a chance to attend her first meeting this week, and I was really glad she was there. She was able to really give us some thinking from the kind of the classroom perspective around some of the pieces of work that we're trying to move, and so I just think it's a tremendous addition that's going to really help support our teachers and students. So again, just echoing what Ms. PG said around the support from the community, really appreciate that, because I do think at the end of the day, it's going to make a big difference for our teachers and kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In our last introduction for this evening, our other newest member to our team, we're really excited to have her here this evening, Jessica Rojas, you can join us down at the front here. Jessica is our new HR specialist, she's coming on board December 2nd officially, and Jessica is coming with a tremendous amount of experience in the HR field, but more so from the municipal side of things, working for the state, working for the city of Boston, for the city of Brookline, and also holds a master's degree from Northeastern in HR. And so not only does Ms. Rojas have the kind of theory and research behind really good human capital and human resource practices, but she also has significant experience applying this in the public realm of the work. So if you wanted to say a few words?
Yes, I'm very excited to come to Blackstone and bring on all of my government and municipal experience and be able to incorporate all of my experience that I've obtained because of the city of Boston, through the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and through the town of Brookline, so I'm excited to start.
I am excited for you to start.
Thank you.
I'm glad you found our little towns.
Yes, yes, I live in North Attabro, originally from the Boston area, and I went to Central State, then I went to Northeastern for my master's degree, and I bring on a lot of good experience, so I'm excited to be here, and it's closer home too, because I live in North Attabro.
We love your insight and energy and presence already, so welcome to the team.
Thank you.
Our next item, we're going to actually hear from our technology consultant, Dan Saltzman, and I actually realized that I was saying our last kind of new face, I actually think that Dan might be a new face to the committee, although he's been working with us since last spring. He's with us July 1st in his formal capacity as our lead technology consultant for the district, and in charge of really helping us frame and build out that long-range vision for our technology and how to really, I like the way he frames it, make it so that you don't even think about it. Good tech just works, and the users can just move it and do what they need to to help kids move forward with their learning, so I really appreciate Dan's approach to that work. He's here this evening specifically though... He's here this evening specifically, though, to walk us through our new website, which is not yet live, has not been launched, which is fine. But he's going to take us through kind of a walk of that website and talk a little bit about how it's going to work and our new app, which I understand is, we're waiting for approval from Apple.
We actually have it.
We got our approval. The MR is going big time. We actually hit the Apple and Android world for our families and staff. So I know, Dan, you'll explain all of that to our community.
I will. I just have to get my phone connected to the computer. I need this to go on here. One second.
Can everybody see this?
Yeah, I don't know if...
Maybe hit one of them.
I can see it. Can you see it?
Yes.
All right, I'm just going to start out not talking about the website. We're going to first just do a little bit of kind of introduction to what the IT department here manages and a little bit of what we've accomplished over the past few months that I've been here. I don't want to spend a ton of time on it, but I just want to give you guys a sense of what we do. And then after that, we'll talk about the website. So just bear with me for a minute as we kind of go through what we have. So in the district, we're currently managing probably more than this, but about sixteen hundred Chromebooks. We have, every Chromebook is part of the Google Chrome Management System. So we're able to completely manage those devices from that system. We've got a Windows network. See all these computers here? About six hundred of those, again, probably a little bit more. About thirty servers have over two thousand users, and they all have to be managed in the Windows Server environment. We've got the Wi-Fi network, of course, with a fair number of access points, probably a hundred and fifty, including controllers and associated devices that make all that stuff work. We have a whole bunch of Ethernet switches, tons and tons of wiring that all has to be held together in about fifteen different data facilities. Of course, we have five different buildings, and all that stuff has to be interconnected. Probably a couple hundred projectors and some TVs, of course. This projector right here is not working, so we're using this one. Each one of these things is something to manage. Just replacing a bulb in that is like a two-hour project, and we've got hundreds of these things. Smartboards, which is a part of this system, almost as many smartboards as we have projectors. Whole bunch of printers. We have, each building has its own internet connection, and that's how we tie the networks together, and managing that whole system is a pretty big deal. We have, each building has its own firewall. That's what helps connect the buildings through the internet connections. Content filtering systems, of course, for the students. We have a system called GoGuardian that helps with theft recovery, content management for the kids, and student classroom management as well. We have smart connections to things like the HVAC surveillance cameras, stuff like that. It's all managed by our network. Clock and bell systems. We manage all sorts of online learning systems, diagnostic systems, testing systems. MCAS is, of course, a big one. We manage all the state reporting, which we have to do several times a year, and that's a big deal. Website, we can hear about that in a minute. The calling system, you know, if there's no school, we send out the calls. We manage that system. The financial systems, the HR systems, the data backup systems to make sure that it's all there if something were to happen. And all of the other stuff that people plug in. So, you know, if it lights up, if it has a plug, people come to us, and there's a lot of them. So that's what we do. These are the systems that we manage. This is more just like what we've done in the last few months, just again, to give you a sense of what we're doing. We had a phone system install that happened over the summer, prepped a little bit into the school year, into September. And it was a really big deal because we had to replace three hundred really old traditional phones with what's called a voice-over ID card. And so you're taking a technology that was like a hundred years old and replacing it with essentially a second computer system. And in order to do that, we had to set up a completely separate network to manage it, and it was really, it was quite a production. We were able to get that done just as school started, and I think the phones are all working well now, which is a good thing. We reinstalled all the PCs at all the buildings because when you clean up for the summer, they all get unplugged, you've got to put them all back. We managed, we set up a hundred and eighty-four new student Chromebooks, about a hundred and twenty-five PC upgrades for our Photoshop lab, robotics lab, computer labs. We have done a little bit more than one thousand four hundred help desk tickets we've taken care of. So that's, you know, you can do the math on that. There's quite a few that come in every day. We set up all of these different learning systems that I alluded to earlier. They all have to be kind of reconfigured for the new school year, and all that has to get done early on in the year. I excel Renaissance Learning, Myon, StemScope, Newzilla, Stars Renaissance, and there's other ones. We set up eighty tablets for the second graders to use Myon because it's easier for them to use a tablet than a Chromebook. We set up a new district-wide video surveillance system, and that's accessible from a computer. And that was completed recently. We replaced most of our coffeers. We have upgraded our backup battery systems. We have a lot of power issues here. And so it's really important that we're able to not have equipment go down when that, when the power fails. Or even if it just dips for a second, you have to be able to keep the systems up. We set up a new Barracuda data backup system to, again, backup all of our data, of course. We set up a TV in the room up over here on the wall. We replaced a whole bunch of projectors. And that's the stuff we've done, and I've probably left out, you know, more than half of what you're seeing up there. So we're doing a lot, and it's exciting, and I'm excited to be here to help make sure it all happens. So website, I just want to give you a little bit of background of how we got to where we are right now. So in September, we selected a vendor, and that's really important. We'll hear more about that in a minute. We had to select a template. You know, they offer different looks and feels, and so we had to choose that one. October, we started content migration, so we've got a whole bunch of content from the previous site that has to make its way to the new site. And we started the app development for everybody's smartphone. That's something that Apple and Google have to approve before it just kind of magically appears on the stores, the app stores. In November, which is obviously now, we sort of finalized the content. We're still in the process of doing that, which is why the site is not a hundred percent live, but I'll still be able to show it to you. We got the app releases. That just happened. The Apple app came out yesterday, so I'm going to show it to you having only been playing with it for about twenty-four hours. We have the public website. We'll go live, I think, by the end of this month. And we're going to have to train like key staff, the people that are going to really help us move the content and generate that initial content to make the site live. In December, we'll have to train other people to be able to update all the different parts of the website. You know, the people involved in athletics will have to learn how to be able to update the live feed and post pictures. And you can just imagine, you know, there's a lot, a lot to it, and everybody has to learn how to get that content up there. It's really about the content, and the content is not going to be generated by me, and it's not going to be generated by the guys over in the IT room down the hall. The content gets generated by the people that work in the district, and like what we just saw here tonight is a great example. We would want that content to go up, and I'll actually show you in a minute, you know, how that works. But that's going to take a big effort. It's a human thing. It's not a technology thing. All right, so the developer that we chose, they're called Apogee. And I don't want to sound like a salesperson for this company because I'm really, that's couldn't be further from the truth. I'm skeptical of all these tech companies, but I have to say, these guys, they really understand what schools need. And I've worked in the private sector and I've worked for schools, and schools are not businesses, and these folks understand that. So they understand the need to market the positive elements of the school district. They understand the need to build the district's identity, and they sort of strip out the complexity of a lot of websites that you'll see out there, and they leave just like really what's necessary to get the content published. Because again, like it's just, it's all about content. If you can't publish the content quickly and easily, it'll be like all those websites you've been to where it hasn't been updated in four months, and you look at it and you're like, all right, that's, there's nothing there, right? So we don't want that to happen. And there's also a big communications element outside of the obvious stuff, and I'll get into that in a minute. So I just want to emphasize, it's really easy to learn and use a lot of it. I have only learned recently. Again, like the app, just got it yesterday. It's just really easy to update everything, and I'm going to go through all the different parts of the service. So solid technology. They also have really pretty great support, which is another important thing. We need to be able to get help when we need it, and they're good with that. So it's essentially like, it's, there's five elements to what they're providing us, what we purchased. And I'm just going to walk through what that stuff does. And again, it's just, it's all designed specifically for schools, which is really fantastic. So the first thing is called Thrill Share, and that's the content management system. That's how you update the site and update the app and all that. Thrill Share, CMS, it's the content management. It's really easy to update. It works from a computer. It works from a phone. And I'm going to actually try to show you, if I can pull this off here. I'm going to show you the interface from the phone. So here is my phone. And I'm going to go, there's two apps that are involved in the system. The one on the left is what I'm going to show you right now, which is Thrill Share app. And if right now, and this is just like, this is a great thing. You see the plus button down there? If I hit this plus button, and I want to post something here, I want to post it to the district, and I'm just going to say, "School Committee..." And then I'm going to take your picture here, and don't worry, this isn't, no one's going to actually see this, but they could. And I hit done. Description. And I hit post, and this will now be posted to the website as part of the live feed, and I can show you that. I've done this about five times today, and every single time with great success.
That's always the way it works. Could be some poor connectivity, maybe just a refresh.
No, yeah, give me, give me one second here. All right, just one more time, I promise. Picture. Okay, I have no idea why it didn't work. I did three of them right before I walked in. It's just always the way, always the way it goes. That said, it is really easy to do. You can do it from the phone. I can show you from the website in order to post something. You come here like to the live feed. You click on, if you want to, I could post it to Facebook. I could post it to Twitter. I could post it to this live feed that's on the site, which is like a, kind of like a Twitter feed. I can say, "We're at the school committee." I can grab a picture. I took this just a little bit earlier. I'll pull up the picture. And then there it is. And I have no idea why the phone didn't do that, but it's just as easy on the phone. And that's the great thing is that you could be out, you know, taking a picture of the band in the parking lot, and you could take a picture of the phone and post it just as easily as what I did, and I promise it would work just as, you know, just as easy as this thing did. So if I refresh the website now, there's the school committee on the live feed. And if we click to see all the posts, there's the picture I just took. And, you know, I could put a better description, obviously, than what's there now. So just real quick, just to show you the site. So here we are. We've got, you've got this nice big banner that I think really looks good. You can put as many pictures on here as you want. We've got some of the marching band athletics. I think I have one of the dance, you know. It's just, it's a, it's a clean sight. I think it looks good. You've got events in the middle, which is like the school calendar. And you can click on anything here. Actually, I'll show you on the phone, a nice feature on the app. If you go to the calendar, you can, you guys see that? So onto the, this is the events on the app, and I would be able to go to, for example, the book fair is at the Parnet Middle School, and if I click on the directions link, it opens up the map. And obviously, people know how to get to most of these places, but if you have events that are somewhere where people might not know where it is, it integrates right with the phone map. I'll show you a little bit more of the app in a minute. So the whole point that I, you know, got on to Thrill Share is just showing you how easy it is to post. And I feel like an idiot that I couldn't get the phone cord, but trust me, it worked great about half an hour ago. So let me go back to the presentation here. So Thrill Share, we went through that, the mobile app. I showed you a little bit of that. We'll get back to it. But the important thing about the mobile app is that it's not just a website. A lot of these things tend to just be a version of the website that fits on your phone, and this is much more than that. It's much easier to navigate. I'll show you in a minute, but you're able to get to pretty much any of the content that's like ninety percent of anybody's going to need with just a couple of clicks, and it's really well-designed, easy to navigate, simple to use, like everything. The website follows the same theme. It's clean, it's modern, ADA compliant, which I'm going to show you at the end. Talk a little bit about that. There's overlap with the mobile app where appropriate. Not everything from the website goes on to the mobile app because it wouldn't be appropriate, but the essential stuff is on the mobile app. The alerts are another great feature, so this is totally separate from the website or what you would expect to get from a website. It allows us to do push notifications, which are those little banners that will appear on your phone. And it'll also allow us to supplement or replace the one-call system, which is what we use if there's an emergency or, you know, more important things. That goes out by text messaging and by phone calls. And so again, from that interface that I showed you on the Thrill Share, you'd be able to go in there with a few clicks right from your phone from anywhere. If the school had to be closed, anything like that, you'd be able to push that out right from the app. So it's real flexible. You can do it right from Thrill Share. It can be done again on your phone or on a computer. And you can, you can use things like push notifications if people are okay with it and they, you know, they opt into it. You can get live updates from anything that would just appear right on your phone. And that wouldn't be, you know, you could, you could use that for the score of a football game, for any kind of an update that you wanted to push out. We all get tons of things like that flashing on our phone. It's not super intrusive. Uh, we all get tons of, of things like that flashing on our phone, it's not super intrusive. It'll also do the text messages, like I said. And it could eventually replace the system that we're using now, which is really, I think, pretty antiquated. I don't know what your-
Yes, yeah, I use it constantly. And it's, yeah, there's like four hundred steps to send out a text.
Yeah, I mean, and that's, I mean, that's the same thing with the current website we have. To update that current website is a nightmare, and this is so much easier. So eventually, I, I expect we'll use it instead of One Call. Um, real quick, and then I'm going to go back and just show you a little bit more around the site. They emphasize ADA compliance, which is of course really important, the federal government requires it. It addresses it in four ways. There's auditory issues, so all content can be embedded with subtitles. So people, uh, who have limited hearing, they're able to, uh, see what they need. People with visual disabilities, uh, can be navigated, navigated with screen readers, it's compatible, fully compatible with that. People with motor skill, who lack fine motor control, it can be navigated with a keyboard. Um, there's no mouse necessary. And these are things that like a lot of us don't think about, but it's really important. Again, we're required to, to have it compatible that way. And people with cognitive disabilities, the site is really easy to navigate. There's not any of these flashing animations and stuff like that. And, you know, again, a lot of us don't think of that, but it's really important. So let me show you a little bit more of the site here. Now each school has essentially the exact same interface. So you can go up here to sites and you can choose a different school. And it's going to have a different set of pictures, it's going to have a different set of events and news and all that. Uh, all the elements that all the sites come with. But it'll be tailored just for that school. And so the, the people that work in that school will have permission to do whatever they want to this one, but they're not going to affect the other sites. I'm just going to get back to the, the district because that's where we spent the most time setting it up so far. So again, I showed you, we've got the image, we have the live feed, we have events, which is the calendar, and we have news, which is just obviously, uh, not things that happened up to the minute, but important events that you want to highlight that could have an entire news story with it. And just want to show you really quickly, when you post to the news, I don't know if any, any of you have ever posted content to a website, but this interface is so much more simple than what has traditionally been out there. You, you can put a photo, browse for it on your computer, you can take a picture with your phone. You put a title, your name, and then you've got this editor. And I'm just curious, have any of you done any kind of posting to any kind of a website? So, I mean, the, the interface usually has three times as many options. And none of them are useful for the most part. Here, you, you basically have exactly what you need, a little bit of formatting, but not enough to make it look ridiculous. And so you can write your story with just enough formatting and publish it, and you're done. Um, another thing that is kind of great is this chat feature. As you're working on it, this is available to anybody that uses the system, um, during business hours, you can send questions to the support team. And they're, uh, like I said, they're pretty good. And if you get lost at some point, they claim to respond to these in two or three minutes usually. So, works out, works well. Um, just back to the website, a couple other things to show you. We've got a staff directory. And on the phone, if you use the staff directory, you're able to click on people's email address and, and their phone, and you can call them. We haven't got pictures in yet, that's one of the things we'll be getting up there. But, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's easy, you can filter it by the department. If you only want to look at the IT folks, you click on that. And there's other ways to, to filter for that kind of thing. We have files. So, um, let's see, if we wanted parents to find the form for... Actually, I'll give you a better one than that. Well, I, I happen to know that, uh, yeah, you know, if, if somebody's going to be volunteering, then they need to correct the form. That's on here, you know, whatever files we want to give people. And it's just, it's much easier to navigate to this stuff than on, uh, most websites that I've worked with. And that's pretty much it. I mean, I, do you have any questions about it? It, there's obviously more to it, but it really, it's, it's pretty much as simple as that. You've got files, you've got the different sites, events, the live feed. It's pretty much just what you need, not much more.
You, you were moving a little quick, but when you went to the middle's page, did they have their own live feed or is it just district?
Yeah, yeah.
Would it be all merged together into one? Or if they post something, is it only running on their live?
It's only running on theirs, but you could post it, let's say that you wanted, uh, three, for whatever reason, if three of the schools had a, I know, an event that was combined, you can pick and choose what you want to post it to. And it depends on the person that's posting it. We wouldn't necessarily give everybody the ability to post to say the, the, um, you know, the district's website. Maybe not everybody at the district would be able to post to one of the elementary school website. So, you know, we have control over who can post to what.
So is there one main landing page that will have all the information for parents? So, so someone that has an, an elementary student, a middle school and a high school, and needs the calendar all together, is that-
They would be able to filter the calendar for the schools that they want to view it for. Um, on that, you would be able to do that on the app. Um, but, you know, the sites are separate. So in that respect, um, when you go to the web, there's no way to sort of combine the totally separate schools in that respect.
So the district won't have a district's calendar?
Yes, no, I'm sorry, the district will have a district calendar, but it, it might not necessarily contain the elements. It, that's sort of more of a policy question. What do we want on the district calendar? What you're saying is, is maybe what we could do is we could post every calendar event that goes on every school also gets posted to the district. And in that case, you would come here and the events would just be a gigantic list of everything from all the schools combined.
On the, just the district, not-
Oh, just the district, correct.
Not HMS. I think that's feedback years ago that we were getting, that, that it was hard to find that one calendar. I think we finally got there and then some hiccups on the way, but I think it's, that is something that's very important.
Yeah, so that's absolutely something we could do. We could have a policy that if you post to your school's calendar, it also goes to the district's calendar.
I think it's, I think it's great too, what Dan, what Dan mentioned. On the app, everything is really easy to navigate. And you could select the schools that you want to be able to see their live feed or their push notifications or their calendar. So you may just have someone at the elementary and at the high school or vice versa, wherever they are. And you can select what you want to come up on the app.
And, and I didn't mean to blow through it all, I just didn't want to take up a ton of your time. Yeah. Uh, but there, it's, it's really, it's very flexible. There is a good amount of power behind it to do the granular kind of stuff that you're talking about, but at the same time, pretty easy to use for the, the, the people that are going to post any content.
Great.
Yeah, Jim.
Any other questions?
And I'm still really upset I couldn't get that. I apologize.
We'll have you come back to another meeting.
Yeah. I did it, I did it like three times.
And the goal of this was to do just like, just that clean, simple, informative, kind of a one-stop shop. I think the app piece was, was really important for us too because it, it's just, it's easier to navigate. A lot of people use these apps for all kinds of things, as we all know. So it just makes it easier on the user end.
Yeah, I mean-
Push notifications are awesome. Like, if they accept that, the user accepts it.
I wanted to say, I'm, I'm sorry. One of the things that, uh, Dan emphasized when we were talking to the leadership team as well is, this is an actual application on the phone. A lot of websites have an app that connects to your phone. And all it does is bounce you back to the, to the actual website, which doesn't look right on your phone, it doesn't have easy navigation on your phone. This is a real app that breaks everything down into simple sections and lets you use it in the palm of your hand effectively, as opposed to having to scroll through a website in the palm of your hand.
Everything, I think they said that basically, everything is within two or three clicks and most things are one or two clicks, so very easy to use. So we have to have a campaign to get that out to as many people as we possibly can. The more people using the app, the better. We can send out those, uh, the push notifications. Just to be clear, though, the text messaging and the phone calls, it doesn't matter if the people have a smartphone, the app or anything. Um, as long as they have a phone, we can send, send a phone call. And if they have any kind of a cell phone, we can send a text message. So the app is just kind of on top of that, not necessary though.
So when do we, are we waiting for the website for the app to come out? Or are they two separate pieces that we can, or are they rolling out together?
Because the app is drawing its content from the website, we, we need to get the content up there before we push the app up. The technology for the website is really almost done. The content is lagging behind a little bit. There's really, there's a fair amount of cleanup. I've looked at the content that we migrated over and I see stuff that I want to fix. There's a lot of legacy content that at this point doesn't make sense to have on there. So it, it's sort of a time-consuming process of going through all of it and just kind of verifying that it's stuff that we really want on the website at this point and, and yeah, for that.
Great, thank you so much.
Sure.
Um, and then just quickly, a couple of, uh, just very brief updates. Um, first, I wanted to update the committee on the work with our elementary science, um, process. And we've spent quite a bit of time on that, as everybody knows, going back to last spring. Uh, our initial target was to have all of the materials, programming, professional development, everything in place for the start of trimester two, which is early December. Um, after the last professional, full professional development day in October, I believe it was the eighth, we had spent some time, um, the, kind of the authors of the units that were written had spent some time along with the principals, really kind of processing with the teachers at each grade level, their feedback on the units. And before we made any final selection, there was a, a recommendation from the teachers to say, you know, is there, is there one more kind of program we can look at and see that might have, um, you know, all these materials kind of all-inclusive, all together? If you remember, when we wrote the units, um, poor Ms. Schaefer had to order all of this stuff individually and put the kits together. We actually had student volunteers to help with that, uh, right before school started. Um, and the feedback, I think, was, was mixed in, in that, you know, some of the units had really strong vocabulary, some of the other units didn't have the vocabulary strong enough. Some of the units had some good literature kind of anchored to it, some of them didn't have enough literature. There wasn't enough options, it wasn't differentiated enough. Um, and so on and so forth. And so this notion of, well, let's look at some other options because this is such an important decision, if we could take a little more time to do that. So we, we committed to that. Um, and we are piloting, uh, the STEM Scopes program in our K through five classrooms. Um, there are sixteen teachers piloting, sixteen or nineteen? I don't remember, sixteen or nineteen teachers piloting. A, I think it's called a scope, which is basically, is that right? But it's, it's a unit of study. You typically need, I believe, six weeks plus to implement the full scope. We are doing it in about a month because we, we do need to start making a, a decision in what direction we're going to move in with this. And so, uh, we are very, very pleased that we have so many teachers that are taking on the pilot and trying, um, the unit and seeing if that might be a better fit for our classrooms. I did have an opportunity to speak with one of the reps from the program. And of course, when you meet with any of these people, their program is the best program ever and it's, you know, top-notch, et cetera, et cetera. Um, there are a lot of strengths to this, um, model. We did also look at the research end. There is a, uh, group called Ed Reports that does a ton of educational research on programs to look at impact on kids. And implementation, uh, use of implementation for staff. While the research has not been released, um, on the middle school side of the, of the program, it is a K to eight program, we're just looking at it for the elementary school. They were able to share some of the feedback about the middle school model. And that is because they're just starting to do the research on the elementary. So they really didn't have any information to share. But what I do know is that the, the K through eight model is fairly similar. It's basically the same structure. So it was helpful to hear the middle school feedback. And what the researcher basically, um, kind of put out in front is, yep, it's really engaging, kids really like it, teachers enjoy it, there's a lot of components, you need a lot of PD and planning time. But just make sure that the actual labs are really connected to the standard skills and concepts the kids need to know. And he used the example, uh, that, um, when many of us were in school, you probably remember doing this, the tower spaghetti project, like how tall can you make the tower, right? Or who can make the strongest bridge? And like, kids remember that, but ask a student to talk about the science behind that. Right? And oftentimes, there are these really cool, hands-on things, but, you know, rarely were the students able to articulate the science behind why that worked. So in addition to our pilot, we're going to be looking for teachers to give us some feedback on that and making sure that the actual, um, the labs and the application of learning piece actually connects to the standard skills and concepts that the kids need to know. So we are taking that pilot on and we're going to be wrapping that up sometime around December thirteenth, which I believe is a Friday. So if we need to spill a couple days into the next week, that's fine. But we do want to make sure that we, um, are able to make some decisions before folks break for the holidays. So we can take that time to get the, you know, if we move in the direction of STEM Scopes, we can do what we need to do in terms of moving back to the committee and talk to the committee about what the needs would be with that. So just a brief update on science.
Any questions? Is there any question? So you said there were about sixteen or nineteen teachers?
Yes, yeah.
What, are, are there any left out with that from K to five? Are there any teachers that are not getting their hands on this right now?
Jenny, I don't know if you want to speak to that.
Repeat that question again, I'm tired.
The teachers that are piloting, um, is it, is it K to five? Or are there any teachers that are not working with the, the curriculum?
So we have sixteen teachers, they, we include all K to five.
So everyone's working with it right now?
Not everyone, but there's sixteen teachers.
Okay. So the teachers that are not, what are they doing? What are they using?
So they're still using that curriculum that written in the summer? So it's kind of nice to give us a comparison.
So are the teachers that are piloting it, teachers that worked with the curriculum in the summer, the, the group of kids that came in from the fifth grade, are they working on another unit from STEM Scopes or are they on social studies or are they?
So some of them are on social studies and some are working on finishing up the unit that was developed over the summer. And then we have others working on a STEM Scopes unit.
So I guess my real question is, are the teachers that are piloting, are they going to have something to compare it to from the fall? Or are they, did they not work with the other?
No, they did. So the teachers did finishing, uh, if I give you an example, a fourth grade teacher asked me, should I finish the unit I'm working on? And I, the answer is yes, you want to finish that. And then she got a transition into STEM Scopes.
It's just, so that's a great question. Now I understand what she's asking. No, no, that's okay. All of the elementary teachers piloted a, um, every single one piloted the science unit in September. So I think one of the things we had talked about in the spring was making sure that everyone had a chance-
There was no social, it was all science.
Everybody was doing science, which I know and I appreciate it. Teachers had to make some adjustments so they're on scope and sequence in order that they do things, but, yep. So they all did, uh, every teacher implemented, uh, the model unit that was created, but, uh, sixteen are doing the STEM Scopes.
The only thing that concerns me is that pressure of we have to have a decision by December. I know what you're saying, it's because we need something here for the kids when they get back in January? Or they're, they're going to be on a social studies unit by then?
So my sense is we'll wrap up science before the holiday break and then they'll go into social studies. That will give us some time to make some decisions and then be able to get the materials ordered.
Because if it isn't a good fit, I don't, I, I trust you're going to say, you know what? This is-
We won't do it.
Another.
Then I'll be back in December saying, Houston, we have a problem. Need to talk about what we're going to do next isn't working.
Any other questions for science update?
Absolutely, it's a, it's a big lift. It's something that, um, I think we really need to get it right. But that being said, there is some urgency in the time of it because we're at this point, which is okay, it happens. But, you know, at first, we were hoping to be ready to launch in September, which we did at the secondary schools, which was good. But then we were shooting for a launch December, right? And I want to make sure, you know, we do have to get to a point where we just make a decision on the direction we're going to go. And, um, a very exciting update for, uh, the committee around our career development work. So, um, you know, we've worked really hard over the past, gosh, very long time, at the high school in particular, to really tackle the college preparation side of the work. And while we're always working to strengthen our curriculum and our instruction and opportunities for learning for our kids, um, you know, we're sending on any given year over eighty percent of our kids off to a, to a four-year school. Some years more than that. And so we, we also know that we are not just about college preparedness, but we are also about career development. And so, um, we have been really working, um, with the high school staff to think very deeply about how can we expand career development opportunities to our students? to think very deeply about how can we expand career development opportunities to our students? And so two just updates this evening. I'll actually do the EdHub first because I think that's something that we've talked about publicly quite a few times. We have five students that are in the advanced manufacturing course. They just finished their first quarter of that course and had their grades. Kids are doing very well. We also got their feedback from a couple of students who basically said the bottom line is this is exactly the type of learning they want to do. And they are really excited about the opportunity to work with different equipment, machines, programming, and are really eager to get even deeper into their current course, but then also thinking about where we'll go next semester with a manufacturing, advanced manufacturing two course. So I just shared that as a kind of quick update because the pilot is working really well. And again, if we build it, they'll come. We have the most students involved in this program. I have all of the, of all the communities involved. We are meeting as a group of superintendents, this small career development group of us next Friday, to really tease out where do we go next? And how do we accelerate this particular course offering for our students? So that's moving along really, really well. And it's really great because actually, so one of our staff drives the van to bring the kids. We made a commitment that we did not want transportation to be a barrier because the course is held at the EdHub. Well, it's a blended learning course. We have one of our staff that actually brings the kids on Tuesday. And we get the best information from him. Because, you know, when you get a kid in a car, it's like a confessional, right? And so, at least with my 13-year-old, it is. So they talk as if he's not sitting in there. And so just getting the feedback from him about how much the kids love it is awesome because like they're speaking so freely about the course. So that's really great. And adding to that, we are really excited. Last Monday, and this work has been in process for a few months now, but the high school principal, myself, one of our science teachers, our engineering teacher, and a guidance counselor made the slog on Monday morning to Danvers High School, which if you've ever been to Danvers, it's like impossible to get to. But, and we wanted to visit because they have, they're in their third year of implementing a biomedical sciences program. And so we actually had an opportunity to visit their classrooms and talk to students actually in class and observe the teacher and look at the materials and talk to the teachers. We then had a panel of staff and kids that represented a biomedical pathways program they have, an engineering and a computer science pathway. And their high school, by the way, I should mention, is 950 kids, right? So when you're, when you're looking at building in pathways for schools that size, it's almost easier because you've got so many different students and different interests. When you're looking at different pathways for a school of just over 400, there's a different challenge there. There are strengths because you can take something to scale quickly, but there's challenges because you have limited, right, resources and students and such. So after a really solid morning of visiting classrooms, looking at curriculum, and talking to students and teachers, we debriefed with the high school team. And the team decided 100% that they want to write a grant and put in an application through Project Lead the Way to have a biomedical sciences pathway at BMR High School, which I think is tremendous. And so it is a $70,000 grant. Mr. Dudik and I worked on it together. And actually, Mike sent it out to the team to look at it and make sure that it captured the different pieces that we were looking to do. And we submitted it today. So we'll know, it's a multi-step grant process, so we'll know within a couple of days, I should say about a week, whether or not we're going to be invited to apply for the full, for the full grant. I think we have a really good chance. We have a very strong application. We have a solid team of staff already behind it. We have the teachers selected that wants to do it, that wants to participate in the training. We're already looking at the overall cost of the program, the materials. The $70,000 would be kind of startup money that would give us an opportunity over three years to implement the different courses. It's a series of four classes. In addition to this, I've already had a conversation with the new president of the Blackstone Valley Ed Foundation. He is working now to assemble a biomedical sciences advisory group of all of our biomed tech businesses in the Blackstone Valley that would work directly with BMR High School to help advise us and support not only the implementation of the classes, but we are also very, very early in conversations about actually having internships for the students during the day in these different biomedical science fields so kids can get out and apply their learning. And so when I said to the committee, you know, a few months back, that we were really dedicated to developing this career pathway model through BMR, you know, we are, the team is working very diligently to do just that. And so I have a meeting on Wednesday with the CEO of the Blackstone Valley Chamber of Commerce to also discuss with her how we can partner with the different businesses, the biomedical businesses in our area. So lots happening in the career development work.
That's a good question. How many students were in the class you observed in?
So it was a typical size. We went to a biomedical, Principles of Biomedical Science course. And it was really interesting. It was actually sophomore to seniors. And it was, they just had pitched it as like an elective. And there were about 25 students. And it was a co-taught class. So there were, there were students that were on individual education plans. There are a couple of English language learners, which I think was really cool. And it was the kids that wanted to take it, took it, and signed up for it. So there's a lot of different ways we can look at it in terms of starting with freshmen and building up, or offering it as an elective at first, and kind of getting the interest and then expanding it from there. So those details are still to be known.
Yeah. Great. That's very exciting.
Yeah, so we're going to be quartering the market on career development in addition to our college preparation work. And then just lastly, very quick, you, in all of the school improvement plans, our principals had written about something called Working on the Kaleidoscope Initiative. The Commissioner of Education is putting together kind of a think tank of educators that want to create these innovative kind of classroom labs to try new teaching and learning practices. And again, it's a grant opportunity that was afforded to all the school districts in the state. I somewhat, I don't somewhat, I wish that the webinar that the department had put out, giving the information on the requirements, was out before the grant application, which would have made some, you know, really good sense. Because for schools and districts that have selected the time that teachers would need to be out of the classroom, I just think it's too much. We're still putting a lot of foundational pieces in. And as we're building our instructional leadership teams and we're implementing new science curriculum, we're selecting new literacy program, I think we need to hit the pause button on that. We don't want to take teachers away from kids. And so I'm just sharing with the, with the committee that we're just going to pause that for now. It's important because it's in the school improvement plan, so I just want the school community to be aware of that.
I'm sure you'll keep your eye on it when it's the right time.
Absolutely. It'll be offered again next year. So we'll just wait until the right, right opportunity. And then for the teachers' report?
All right, thank you. And sorry, Matt, I'm going to go backwards to public forums just to clear up.
I respect that.
I know, but you were talking about being moved to the top. If there's anyone here that would like to address us, you can definitely come right to this circle.
Yes, that's me.
Thank you for your patience this evening.
My name is Doris Suits. I live here in Blackstone, and I'm here tonight to convince you and to prove to you that the young students in our area should be taught to write in addition to printing. I talked to a mother the other day, and she assured me that they are not learning how to write, only what they get at home. Well, all parents are not qualified to teach their children reading, writing, arithmetic, history, and geography, and it's not their fault. I have here a copy of the Declaration of Independence. And the students who do not write will not be able to read this most historic document in our country. Now, I also have here my daughter's first writing pad. And instead of having just one line, there are double lines where the pupil writes in. And I'm going to teach, I'm going to show you how one is taught how to write. I have here paper with double lines like you saw in this pad. And how this happens is, hello?
Hello.
Hold your pencil. Can I move this just?
Right, that's my pilot's double.
Okay, hold the pencil in your hand and just leave it loose. And you're going to let me show you how to write. No.
I wasn't good at this even.
A. E. I. O. U. And that's how the teacher will teach you how to write. Now, Dr. DeFalco. Going to show you, hold the pencil, okay?
All right.
Leave it loose, right? And this is how you are teaching your children how to write. A, E, I, O, U. Now, when the teacher taught me how to write, I had a hard time writing capital D for Doris. So I wrote it with a small d. And when she came over, she said, no, that won't do. And she took the patience to teach me how to write a capital D, right? And it, and it took her a while, but she taught me. If I finally got it right, I want to see how you make a capital D.
Can I take yours?
Oh, my goodness, that's printing.
I have a little hybrid.
That's printing.
I use a little bit of the one.
So I have here documents. They're both my daughter teaches school and my niece, who's retired teacher. And she, you'll have 10 pages to prove why we should be teaching these kids how to write as opposed to just printing. So, Dr. DeFalco, have you given any thought?
Thank you.
To reinstating the art of writing? By the way, of course, you probably know it's called cursive, C-U-R-S-I-V-E. And it means designating writing in which the letters are attached. Have you given any thought to reinstating writing in schools here in this area? What is your comment?
Yeah, not too much, to be frank. We haven't given too much thought to it. As it is, we're scrambling for time to get in the other content, the other subjects that we have to make sure we're teaching. Literacy, social studies, science, math, art, music, health, phys ed, bus lunch, recess. So we're, we're working on a very archaic schedule to get all that in, as you can imagine, so.
Well, just let me read to you. This, the top one that you have was sent to me by my niece Carol, who lives in Virginia. And she's now retired. And she just told me the other day that Virginia is bringing back writing, cursive writing. So that's, so the first sentence, "Developing an attractive, legible, cursive handwriting style" certainly has great aesthetic value, but it also has numerous mental, physical, social, and practical benefits." That's quite a statement. And these, the other seven pages were sent to me by my daughters with, and it's written by people in authority. So I hope you will seriously consider, you know, that the students will be taught to write. Now, what happens when they get to be adults and they can't sign their name on legal documents? They're not going to be able to print it, and they won't be able to put an X like they did years ago when people couldn't write at all. And this is why the citizens of the United States have instituted schools because the parents are not qualified to teach children reading, writing, arithmetic, history, and geography. So I thank you for your time, and I hope that you will seriously consider having the kids learn how to write. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for the research. Thank you. All right, moving, are there any other public forum moments?
Oh, would you want to?
Moving on to the report of the business office.
And who's that lady in the bed?
You're on.
Sir? Sir?
So first, first piece of the report from the business office is, sorry, is the FY21 budget timeline. I'm not going to read through every date range for everyone, but I would just like to point out a few key timeline factors. We have already started working on the budget for FY21. All of the principals and cost center leaders have received their information on what they budgeted for this year and have received sheets to start creating their budgets for next year. In general, this year's process should look different than last year's process because we are on phase two of a plan that we started last year. So as opposed to starting at a zero-based budget, we know what the initiatives are that we're looking at. We know what work we have put into place. And the principals have developed their school improvement plans, which anchor back to the district blueprint, which will indicate where we should be focusing our resources. So with that said, they will be preparing their budgets during the, between now and the 29th of November. Dr. DeFalco and I will be meeting with the cost center leaders and the principals. We are going to be actually, I apologize. We'll be meeting with them all, probably, probably up to the first week in December to make sure that their, their priorities are aligned with the district. And then we'll be presenting a forecast of our school priorities to the school committee at the December 12 meeting. After we present those priorities and get feedback from the school committee, we will go back to the, to the table and try to tweak some things. And we are hoping to have a draft budget completed for review at the January 9th school committee meeting. If that budget is looked upon favorably, then we will move forward with that. If there's thoughts that we need to try to make some adjustments or changes, that will give us a little bit of time to readjust and possibly sharpen our pencils. And then we are hoping to review the budgets between February 1st and March 6th with all of the board of selectmen and all the town administrators.
I'm ready. I'm ready.
The hope is that on March 12, we will be able to have a public hearing, and the school committee will be able to adopt the FY21 budget.
I'm sorry if I missed it. You did say we would have another joint meeting.
Yep, I apologize. There will be a joint meeting at some point. I may have missed it.
I, I forgot.
Apologize. Between January and January 31st, we're hoping to have another joint meeting.
For time's sake, I'll point out, I think the other night went very well. For time's fun, I'll point out, I think the other night went very well.
About the budget.
It was nice, it, the attendance.
The attendance was terrific. And I think it's very promising for the work that we're gonna be doing ahead that everyone was at the table and everyone was showing an interest. And I think that it'll be really good for us moving forward to keep them actively engaged.
Can I just interrupt for one minute? You know, sometimes I listen with one ear. So would you tell me again what your thought is on bringing back cursive writing?
Yeah, no, I was sharing. I haven't, I haven't given it too much thought because we're trying to get in the, the school day now, the different subject areas that we're trying to sign.
But you will think about it and consider it?
I will absolutely think about it.
And make sure you read those papers because I think you'll find, you'll find proof of, of what you need to know. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm not sure if we would like to look at this budget timeline and approve the timeline as drawn out.
How do I get out of here?
Does anyone have any questions about this timeline?
I apologize.
Yeah, it's, it's an action.
Are there any, I apologize. Are there any questions regarding this timeline?
No.
No question?
If you just square with what everybody's thinking for, okay.
I think so. I'm looking for a motion to approve the proposed FY21 budget process and timeline as presented in front of us.
Second.
Approved by Sarah and second by Jack. Any other discussion or questions for Matt? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any of us? Thank you.
So the next thing, okay, so we'll send, that's okay. So we'll send this up to the finance updates and board of selectmen. Uh, yes.
It was approved. It's perfect.
So, the next item in my report is a facilities study. You have in your package an RFP that I am proposing that we put out in order to conduct an entire facility study. And since Dr. DeFalco and I have come to the district, we've heard a lot of mention about, we'd like to see a five-year capital plan. We, what's your capital plan? And I respect that, as we should have a capital plan. However, neither Dr. DeFalco nor myself are engineers or architects. And we would like to treat these buildings with the respect that they deserve. And we would like to put together a really solid plan that we understand what's happening in each of the buildings. We understand what's going on with the systems. And then we can make informed decisions, possibly in conjunction with the regional agreement amendments, to decide how to prioritize what it is that we're doing with the buildings. So, I won't go through the entire document. But if you flip to the third page, there's a great number 37. If you find number 37, it's very clear that the component elements to be assessed for each facility include substructure, which includes foundations, below-ground components, et cetera. Core and shell, which includes floors, bearing walls, roofs, windows, et cetera. Interiors, which includes the doors, the bathroom, toilet accessories, lockers, shelving, stairs, flooring, finishes, all building equipment and systems, including elevators, plumbing systems, HVAC systems, fire detection and suppression systems, and electrical systems. And site improvement for accessibility, parking lots, walkways, fences, to ensure ADA compliance as we're moving forward with these projects. And I also have specified that I'd like for us to be looking at energy efficiency improvements so that we could potentially retrofit equipment or add equipment to the district that will generate cost savings and be hopefully more environmentally friendly. So, this proposal is to, what I'm requesting is to take this RFP and be able to make it public so we can solicit information from various either project management or architectural firms and express an interest in this work. We have done an initial assessment of what the possible costs are. I believe the costs may run approximately into about forty thousand dollars for this entire study. My assumption is that it would not exceed fifty thousand dollars. And just in preliminary discussions, it would certainly require later approval. But in preliminary discussions, Dr. DeFalco and I had mentioned that this would be another excellent use of E and D funds that we, that we have available. So, I don't think that we need to approve funding right now. But I would ask for us to look at and approve the RFP so that I can move forward on getting this work started.
So the process after, if we were to approve the RFP tonight, then you would put it out for?
I would get proposals.
And then you would have to come back to us if we did not approve a number tonight?
Well, we also don't know, potentially, the numbers could be different than what I'm, than what I'm initially expecting. I don't have any actual proposals in front of me. So if I put this RFP out and we, and we look to see what comes back, we can then get an assessment of what the actual prices are. The other option would be to approve the expenditure.
Up to?
Up to, yep, not to exceed fifty thousand dollars.
I'm just wondering if that slows you down if we, if we don't do it that way? But what would the timeframe be? So these would be due back to you by December 19th?
Nineteenth.
And how long would you expect, once you hired one of the companies? What would that then be?
I can't speak to the timeframe of the study itself. Like, I'm not really positive.
It's a lot. I mean, it's a lot of script of it.
Yeah, it's a lot of, it's a lot of time. So that's why I'm looking to try to move as quickly as we can to get this posted. But I assume that different companies will give probably wide variety of how much time it's gonna take them. But I wanna make sure that we're getting the thorough work from a really reputable company that has the qualifications we're looking for. I don't think that it would slow the process down if we were to wait. I also don't have specific wording for a motion to approve the appropriation because E and D hasn't been certified yet either. So we would need that to be in the wording of the, of the movement. So, I, what I can say is, I can get a little bit more specific information and then come to the December 12th meeting with, with an estimate for our funding to be approved. If that makes sense to the committee.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just would, um, the reports be by each building? Do you think it'd be separate?
Oh, absolutely.
Very good.
They would have a thorough analysis of, yeah, by, by school.
By school.
And then we'd be kind of.
Analysis of the structures. Analysis of the. They will, they will estimate life expectancies for all of the systems, all of the structures. So this will be a big task.
And if, if I could just, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm saying very thorough.
And I think, and I think the timing of this is really important because, you know, we think about the meeting we had Tuesday around the regional agreement, you know, amendments that are being made. There's a lot of conversation at that meeting around, you know, real estate, so to speak, and space within the buildings. You know, we're, we're looking to obviously, you know, clean up the language of that document, but also do some other things with being able to have the latitude to put some plans together moving forward. I think we need a really good sense of what the building structures have in store before we can even do that. And I, and I also think when we think about the high school in particular, I know there's been a lot of conversation about where we go next. I know I've had some, you know, just, you know, kind of informal discussions with it, with the towns about that too. Like, oh, what's going on with the high school? Should we be budgeting for anything? And we keep saying, well, we don't really know yet. Like, we don't know what we're doing yet because we need to get this analysis done. We need to look at the regional agreement. We have to, there's a lot to kind of wade through before we can even enter into that discussion. So I just, I think from a timing perspective, this, like, this makes a lot of sense.
I agree. It's very responsible of us to start with this and, and give valid answers instead of just coming up with a capital plan that is being asked for, but not having the real, you know, information that we need to be able to do that.
If we had, was it all buildings? So we have, I thought it was years old now, though. Maybe, maybe. What was the last report? I thought they did something. But I think it's probably too old anyway. It needs to be totally.
Well, I can say last year I started on this type of a process by bringing in energy efficiency companies to look at the energy systems like our boilers and our electrical. And they all have these proposals that, well, we can save tons of money by introducing these high-efficiency equipment and that will help fund the other projects that they want to propose, which is really, they're, they're corporate. You know, they, they're looking to sell their products. So I'm not saying that that can't be incorporated into this project. That's why I specifically referenced the, the possibility of adding energy efficiency upgrades or retrofits. But I don't want it to be led by a, a company that is selling the products.
And correctly, if I'm wrong, having this completed information that are in would help us going forward with MSBA for any needs?
Absolutely. This will help us with all of our long-term capital planning and we would be able to much more clearly articulate to MSBA what our needs are, should we decide to apply to them for any other funding.
Look at us, the why behind it. And I think it will also help us, you know, and it will help us sequence the priorities, you know, appropriately. That makes sense?
Any other questions for Matt on the RFP proposal? So I think we'd just be looking for a motion to approve the RFP, the proposal in front of us and then you'll return to us with the bids in hand and a better idea on price and cost to the district. Would you like to be part of that?
Make a motion to approve sending out the RFP.
Okay, motion made by Tara. Is there a second?
Second.
By Sarah and Karen. And any other discussion or questions? All those in favor to approve the RFP being posted?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any others? Thank you.
Next, in the business office report, we have our revenue review. If you take a look, I, I won't belabor any points on the financial reports. I can say that things are currently looking the way they should. We brought in, if you look at the bottom of our revenue review, we're anticipating revenues of about twenty-four million eight hundred thousand and we're almost at nine million in revenues currently. So we're in a, we're in a good state. And we expect that there shouldn't be any changes to that. There haven't been any cuts to funding. There's no indication that we're gonna lose any of the revenues that have been addressed. On the expenditure review, again, things are looking fine. There's no projections at this point that we're going to be majorly outside of the ballpark of where we budgeted. However, I did highlight a few of the areas where they're, we're anticipating at this point there being us going into the red. If you look at, if you look at function code 1210, which is superintendent's office, it looks like we may overexpend in that line by approximately thirteen thousand dollars. And in the notes section, you can see that was due to increased dues, additional dues for memberships that we recently joined and also the Mars consulting. So, so that package is coming out of there. The school curriculum leaders, the 220, we have, as you're seeing, approximately fifteen thousand dollars anticipated in the red, which is minimal in a budget this size. But that is due to additional curriculum writing that we've engaged the faculty in. And last is the difference in instructional assistance. And that cost is driven by the needs of the students and we just require to put in additional supports. At this point, everything seems to be looking fine. The numbers on the bottom that are in the red, which are the ones that always show up, which are the tuition to other states and non-public programs for special education expenditures, those are currently in the red, but I do want to make sure that the committee is aware that we do have over a hundred thousand dollars for circuit breaker that we're, from FY19, that we're still expending on these costs. So this is an analysis of the budget for FY, I'm sorry. We have the money from, yeah. This is an analysis for, I'm already into 21 in my head. This is an analysis for the FY20 expenditures. It doesn't currently include what we will be expending from FY19 to cover those costs of tuitions. So it shouldn't be significantly in the red. Personnel changes, I've included in the package, but again, we don't typically discuss those on air. And lastly, is our facilities report. So at the JFK AFN complex, the majority of the work is completed. There are admittedly a few windows that still need to come in. We're waiting on the glass. I know Dennis is upset, one of them is by his office. But they're now starting to go, the architect and the contractors are going through the punch list items. Dr. DeFalco and I, regarding the paving of the complex, we did meet with the town on the 28th of October. And that's, the paving is gonna be pushed off into the summer. So they're not, they're not planning on doing that anytime very soon. Update on the boiler and at Millville Elementary. I'm very thankful and happy to say that on November 4th, Millville voted to put the project on the ballot for the December 4th, 2019 election. And there was little to no argument about it. I was very pleased with the understanding of the community and them identifying the real need for this project. High school fire system is up and running. The testing was completed on the 8th of this month and we're currently hooked up to the fire department and everything is safe and secure. Regarding the roof complex, Dr. DeFalco and I met with Dan Keys and Dan Keefe on the 28th. We talked about what we wanted to do with next steps. This actually says that we're currently in the process of arranging a walkthrough involving Sarnafill and a representative for us and the men and our insurance company. That has since been scheduled for this coming Monday at noon. So we have Sarnafill, Maya, town representatives. We have a project manager that will be representing the owner that will be joining us. And we're gonna all go up and look at everything and make sure that everyone is on the same page and make sure that we're prepared to take the next steps to fix the roof once and for all.
We are making them all go up together. So they're all seeing what we're seeing and we're gonna have a, that's it. Revenue party.
Move the ladder away until the problem.
Do you all agree?
Too many cooks in that kitchen that are all blaming the other cook for the yucky taste of the stew there. Here's my analogy for you.
Maybe you wanna take Jesse with you or video. He did the roof at BMR once, that was you. He, actually, they, before we had this roof replaced, they went up there to make, it's probably still on our YouTube channel. If you wanna see what it looked like before.
It's, yeah, interesting comparison. Regarding the high school secure vestibule, that project is still underway. I've actually now received quotes from two different architectural firms to do the designs for the vestibule. Again, the project is still estimated to be under fifty thousand dollars. We have one quote of seven thousand six hundred for the architectural design work. And I received another one from the architects. and I received another one from the architects that we are working with on the JFK project, the doors and the windows, and they proposed a $5,000 fee for their work. We'll just need to make a decision and start moving forward on that. Lastly, a new thing that arose this past week is the sewage pumping station at Early Village. They had a call that, there was a distress call from the pumps, and thank you to Jimmy Sullivan, who went out and was on call and got Williamson Pump and Motor out there to try to start looking at it. One of the pumps is damaged, and we have a few options that we will probably need to process. Their estimate to rebuild the pump and replace it is about $10,500 in total. Their estimate to replace it with a new pump is $13,000 and change in total. And then I also had a discussion with them and said, so there's two pumps that are constantly running, and if one of those, if one pump is gone while it's being repaired, which could take a significant amount of time, eight, nine weeks, and then something else happens to the other pump, we're in very big trouble. So one of the ideas that we were discussing is buying the replacement pump, having the replacement pump put in, and then having the existing pump repaired and keeping it on as a spare pump. So that in the event that any time there was damage to one of the pumps, we could pull the pump, put in the replacement pump, and then get everything fixed as quickly as we can while we were confident that the system was working, so.
What, this affects what, the high school? Is that the?
The, the high school, the high school sewage is connected to Early Village.
So is there only one working right now?
Yeah. They have not removed the second pump yet. They actually were able to override, like, some wiring in it, so they're currently still working, but they're going to need to take the one out.
So they're offering us a deal to repair it if we buy anything?
It's more that a lot of the costs are associated with labor, so the more of it we get done at the same time, it's, it's more cost effective.
So, is this, this is something we should not wait on?
Yes, this is probably something that we should not wait on.
You don't want the sewer lines back that up into the fields? We have a big problem.
So...
You know, another option, another option, if we were concerned with the financial aspect of it is, if we replaced it with the new pump and held on to the existing pump, and then at a later point in time, had that repaired so that we can have it as a, as a standby? I don't think that that, once it's already out, I don't think there's going to be additional costs to fix it. It would just be deferring the cost to later at some point.
And we do not have any, any money left in that sewer account? I feel like it was closed right before you came in.
Yes, we, yeah, we closed it.
In that first month of your?
Yep.
So that is not available? So if we were looking at paying for this, we were looking at, are we finding it in the budget?
Yeah, we would be finding it in the budget. Or?
Or are we looking at E and D?
We could potentially do that as well.
You said that's not certified yet?
It's not certified yet.
But we approved the, for the emergency, I mean, how, we know what we had as of last year? Do you have a good for that number?
It was 68, yeah, 68, 684, 684, approximately.
And we just approved the?
We're estimating that E and D, estimated, that E and D will be approved this year at slightly under $800,000.
So I, I personally feel that this is something that we shouldn't wait and see, or wait, you know, and even financially, but I don't know the feel of the rest of the committee.
Yeah.
It's something we can fix in our house. So, we'd be looking at a much bigger issue. So if we have a motion to rebuild or replace, is something that would be rectified fairly quickly now?
There's an eight to nine weekly time on a new pump, so moving quickly.
It's not?
It's still, it's still not super fast. So actually, I can start, I can start communicating with the company and then possibly bring a funding proposal back to be voted on, again, at another meeting.
Thoughts from the committee?
For them to just approve up to a number now, if it needs to get done.
Yeah.
Then you can go with it. Does it need to operate? That way, if there's a bigger emergency, you already have to, like, you have to.
It can, it could be three, it could be three written. We all, they also have put in this, they're familiar with the system, and they, they've already been doing a lot of the work, so I don't think it will be, it will be an issue, but.
What was recommended? A new one is old, like, to repair it?
Yeah.
It's just, by time, like, it has to be, if we were there to get it, we're better off with new?
I think it would be better to purchase a new, a new pump.
It's only a $3,000, a $3,000 expense.
Right.
We're wanting to get a bigger life expectancy of it, I assume.
Yeah.
So I'd be looking for a motion to approve the purchase of a new pump for the sewage pumping station at Early Village not to exceed $15,000? And do we want to earmark it out of E and D? Yeah.
So, so motion?
Okay, so a motion made by Sarah to approve the purchase of a new pump for the sewage pumping station at Early Village not to exceed $15,000, and that money would be moved from E and D. Is there a second?
Second.
So a motion made by Sarah and second by Karen. Any other questions or conversation? Please do in this press. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
That concludes my reports. Sorry to conclude it on such a happy note. Or a crappy note.
Not happy yet.
All right, thank you very much, and moving on to school committee forum. Sarah, do you have anything?
I just wanted to thank everyone from Blackstone and Millville who attended the joint meeting. Like you said, I thought it was a good feedback session, and we'll be meeting again. The RAP will be meeting on the 21st after the District of One dinner. So we'll have turkey, fog, but we'll be digesting turkey and all of that feedback. Together. All of them.
Bring your pumpkin. Very good. And I will just say thank you to all the Millville residents that did come out and attend the town meeting on November 4th. And we do still need you to show up on December 4th to approve the, the funding of it. It will be the only thing on the ballot, so hopefully those that were as supportive at the town meeting are the ones that show up for the polls that day. And again, congratulations to our marching band on their undefeated season, and I wish them some great rest in the next few weeks through the holiday. And that's all I have. Jack, did you have anything? All right, so our next meeting is December 12th, and that is back at the middle school.
Yes, at 6:00 P.M.
6:00 P.M. And we, we are moving into an executive session, so I'm looking for a motion to move into executive session and not to return the votes from the, some? Motion made by Tara, second by Sarah, and we need your help.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.